Okay, we're on the air. Good evening. This is regularly scheduled meeting of the Willmet Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Colang.
Here.
Mr. Pelletan.
Here.
Mr. Sermon.
Here.
Ms. Choka Urban.
Here.
Chairman Schneider.
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence and applications, on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the application that come before us this evening should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meet standards of review set forth in section 5.4. F of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based upon whether the standards of review set forth in sections 5.3. E of our village ordinances are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we are making this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on November 12th. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The Village Board has the final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The Village Board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There's one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a supermajority of five of seven Village Board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There's one small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by majority vote. We operate instead by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an application must receive four affirmative votes. We have four members, we have five members present, so four of our five have to approve Three to two will not work. In recognition of this unusual feature of our procedure, when we do not have all members of the board present on a given evening, we give applicants who are scheduled to come before us that night the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is November 6th. There's no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before any substantive arguments as the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the pre-painted agenda located by the table near the door. When your case is called, please proceed to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during this past week. In addition, we have received from the village staff these green booklets that you see by the door containing all the written information that you have submitted in support of your application as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it's not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has a chance to speak, we will open the podium to others who wish to speak. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, but we will ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence, and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceedings will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here and planning to testify tonight, I would ask you to raise your right hand this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you're about to give? If you so, please say "I do." Ms. Roberts, can you please call the first case?
Our first case of the evening on the revised agenda is 2019 C-35, One Indian Hill Road.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, everyone. My name is John Talte. I'm with OKW Architects, 600 West Jackson Boulevard, Chicago, Illinois, 60661. On behalf of my client, Indian Hill Club, I respectfully request a continuance of this conversation to the November 20th ZBA meeting, and I appreciate the help that staff has provided in getting us to this point, and apologize to anyone who was here to speak on behalf of this subject tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any comments?
Move to continue. Case number 2019 Z-35 until November 20th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Our next case is 2019 C-37, 726th, 11th Street. This is a request for a 430.23 square foot front yard impervious surface coverage variation and a 204.51 square foot front yard patio coverage variation to permit the installation of a patio.
Thank you. Paul Sally.
Gina Sally.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, residing at 726th 11th Street. Thank you for hearing our request, and thanks to Lisa for helping guiding us through the process. By the way, as a former math teacher, I am impressed by the word problem potential in zoning variance calculations. It's quite something. As you've read, we are asking to replace our concrete patio with a larger paver patio in what we think of as our backyard. However, the orientation of our unit in the townhouse complex is such that from the point of view of the street, it is in our front yard. I wasn't aware that everybody had visited the property, so you may know what the orientation is. We have just a couple of pictures to orient ourselves to it.
So yours, excuse me, so yours isn't behind where the number 724 is on the garage door?
No.
Oh, it's in the front?
Yeah, ours is in the front on 11th Street. So you drive in, you drive in the driveway, you take a left, and then you see the front doors in that sort of center courtyard. So our front door is away from the street, then our backyard is our front yard, which is next to the street.
So the number I saw was just for the garage doors, I guess?
Okay, okay. 724 is...
The arborvitae.
Oh, that's 724.
We're right behind those arborvitae.
We're right behind the arborvitae. So if you look at the first picture, the arborvitae is hiding our yard and where the proposed change in patio would be. And we really do enjoy living in the downtown area. We've been there for a little over two years, and we'd like to have the opportunity to have our patio be a more enjoyable space for ourselves and our family. And in addition to sending out the required notices to area residents, we spoke directly with our other members of our Townhome Association who are supportive of our request. We do believe that the proposed variation allows us to reasonably use our backyard or front yard, and it's unique in its circumstances and will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. All the other information, I think, is in your packet, and it sounds like it's reviewed. I'm happy to, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for the applicant?
I guess I'm curious. I looked at some of the other patios, not all of them, but they all seem to be about the same size currently.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, yes. So when the, it seems to me that when the units were constructed, that they put a concrete patio in those units that were near the 11th Street.
Sure, sure. You know, as the zoning board, we're supposed to interpret the codes, and then the village makes the final decision. We vote on it, but our role is really to interpret that. So when we interpret it, I look at it, I wonder, we always ask, what's the hardship for the request? You know, it might be, well, the lot is too small, and we think this is a reasonable size, so that's our hardship, or because the village doesn't like to start paving more and more because of the flooding issues. So do you consider that your hardship, that you can't use it the way you'd like?
Yeah, we can't, we can't use it the way we like with 196 square foot patio there. Yes, it has a table. Yes, you can not have a table and have a lounge area. We'd like to be able to have a grill, a lounge area, and a table back there. And then the calculations, because of the nature of the property, the calculations of that front yard include the driveway, so that's already in there. We're not asking for a variance for the driveway, but that actually is technically common property, but it's in our property.
Our calculation.
And how many square feet do you think is common? Did you list that in here?
I, we did not, and I'm not sure how it gets interpreted, so I was, so some of the, I don't know.
So that whole, okay.
No, but because it's a townhouse, it not only theirs, but the adjoining one is also included in the calculation.
So there's a whole 100-foot front to the unit, which includes a driveway, our unit, and then the unit next to us. And then the setback is now 32 feet because of what's on the block, and so that creates the overall square footage. Some of that is the driveway, which is, would be...
You can see it from the picture one, that driveway is where all five units enter the property.
Does it just count against the two that are at ground level?
Yes. It counts with our unit and the unit next door, right?
Because we're the only ones with front yards. I don't know what the backyard calculation looks like for this. All I have read about is the front yard calculation. These are the two units that are front, yeah, facing 11th Street.
But that driveway is for all five units?
It's for all five units. That's correct, so that's something unique as well.
So here it says the driveway is 90, almost 95 feet. Is that correct, Lisa? Or am I looking at this wrong? This area right here?
It is.
The property on 1.4?
The length, yeah, that's the lot length. The driveway and the adjacent concrete sidewalk are 672 feet in the front yard.
Okay, so the driveway is, that helps out. Everybody is counting against them.
Correct.
Now, would this limit the neighbor? If we grant this, then would it limit the neighbor next door from increasing the size of their patio?
They would have to ask for relief as well, again.
So it's not blanket to the entire development?
No, it is for this specific purpose.
Okay, and if you...
When you get a lot of rain, is there an issue with water?
There hasn't been.
Do you have a lower level or not?
Mm-hmm.
Are you doing...
We have a sump pump.
Have you talked to any of your neighbors about this?
We did.
Does anybody have an issue with it?
No issues. We spoke specifically with our next-door neighbor who's part of this because, at the time, we didn't quite know how the whole calculations worked. When we realized it, we sat down, explained to her what the issues were, explained to her that this does impact her, any interest she might have in changing her patio. And it's slightly different because she may have some of her patio that's beyond the 32 feet, just by the construction of it, but it would impact anything she'd want to move toward the, toward 11th Street. She had no objections. She knows when this is. She has no objections to it.
Lisa, is there an overall calculation for all the units for the impervious, instead of just looking at this property and the pavement? Is there a way to look at all the buildings, all the pavement, and all the impervious areas, or not?
We do not have a whole entire lot limit, so it's just by front yard, rear yard, and combined side yard. But for townhouses, it's done for the whole development, not just a single townhouse unit, which is why their front yard is included with the neighbor to the north.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a tremendous amount of impervious surface, including the building and the driveway, which is shared, and your current patio. It's about 81.5% covered, and this would bring up another 3% by my calculations, which may or may not be accurate. You're the math teacher. But, you know, that kind of coverage would be really unusual for another kind of single-family home. This is, this is really, I don't know if it's unique, but it is very unusual.
Very dense, you mean?
Well, it's because they also share it with the other units, and the calculation, you know, it covers the two units that are closest to the street. So I am very sympathetic with your interest in having the larger space to entertain. I do wonder about how much, you know, where we draw the line on how much more pavement, how much more impervious surface.
Oh, so you're, I think I understand your argument now. You're saying there's 85% impervious compared, if you were to compare it to a regular standard lot in Willmet, that might only have 50% or 40 or whatever.
So looking at, can I ask a quick question?
Much of that is the driveway, you know? If you didn't have a driveway that was, geez, a third of the property...
So you're looking at, am I right that the calculations are coming from that?
Yeah.
Yeah. And it may be, you deal with this all the time, I don't. The nature of townhomes are, do tend to have more driveways and impervious surface with walkways and the like. I don't know what's common in Willmet for those. We didn't look into that.
Lisa, there was an, there's an example on Popper that is under construction now, these four townhouses. As I recall, we confronted a similar situation there, including setbacks on all the business, right?
Yes, they needed a lot of variations.
But it was the right thing to do for that location. I agree with the issues. We all have raised the subject of not increasing impervious surface and runoff into the sewers. And so even though, I hope at some point they change the building code to give more credit to pervious surface construction. And there are techniques and products that almost, or increase, or do better than just grass and lawn. But there's not, the standards today are that you simply get a 10% credit for whatever you do, if you were to choose a pervious material. I hope at some point they change that, because then it would encourage, it would incentivize owners to do more to reduce runoff. So while we cannot, the board cannot tell you how, what kind of thing to construct, we would encourage you to consider pervious material if you possibly can. Anyway, that is my, any other comments for the applicant? Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody want to speak on this, regarding this application? Seeing no one, I will close the testimony, and someone may make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Move to recommend granting a request for 430.23 square foot, 13.44% front yard impervious surface coverage variation, and a 204.51 square foot, 6.39% front yard patio coverage variation to permit the installation of a patio at 726th 11th Street in accordance with the plan submitted.
I'll second that.
Yeah, so this is obviously an unusual piece of property. I mean, your backyard is where your front yard should be, and, I mean, it's built in a way which makes sense, I guess, to come in, and you have all the garages kind of in the circle, and, but everything's kind of turned around, so you kind of, you know, the way the zoning codes are set up, it kind of hurts you because of the way it's sighted. You know, candidly, with the coverage you have, nobody can see anything anyhow. So, you know, that's a positive. From a pervious, impervious surface coverage variation request, this is a large one for us. It's larger than we would typically, you know, be willing to go forward with, but I think there are some real mitigating issues here, one being, once again, the way your property is sighted, two, the fact that you are getting penalized with the driveway. And I think if you were able to take those away, you wouldn't have, you may not even have to come. So from my perspective, I think there is a hardship here, given the way that the property is sighted and having to use the driveway as part of the calculation. And I think it's a relatively minor request as far as how much you're expanding the patio. So from my perspective, I think it meets the standards of review, and I can support it.
Yeah, I would second what you said, and even more so because the neighboring property is also included in the calculation. If they come to us and say they want to, then that would be an interesting discussion because I, you're not quite 100% covered on the lot, but we're getting close.
I guess looking at the overall site plan, it kind of explains it a little bit better. Where you can see the different properties and the adjoining property to the north does have a lot more green space. Instead of a driveway on the side, it's got a area of green space that appears to be, I'm not sure, eight or 10 feet deep along the whole side. So I'm not even sure if they came in, if they would have the same issue that you had.
And it's set further back from the street.
And it's set back further, so they even have more green space. And then I look at the other units, and the corner units in the back are very similar to the one next to you, that they've got this corner of green space. The only one that isn't, but it looks like it potentially could be a smaller unit, is the center one. So I'm kind of on the fence, but I do understand the possibility of hardship with the location being in the front yard. So I guess I'd like to hear what my other colleagues have to say.
I agree with everything that has been said by Mr. Colang and Mr. Pelletan. I think this is a unique situation with mitigating circumstances, and I can absolutely support the variation request.
I have a similar view. I'm looking at the standards of review, and I think all but maybe one, I think, are met. I think the front yard setback, if they did nothing, they're already in violation of a code that was changed in 2003, and this preceded all that. So there's nothing they could have done about that. It just was imposed on them, and so I think to make better use of this small, open space in front of their unit will add a lot to the enjoyment of their home, and so I can also approve it. Please call the roll.
Mr. Colang.
Yes.
Mr. Pelletan.
Yes.
Mr. Sermon.
Yes.
Ms. Choka Urban.
Yes.
Chairman Schneider.
Yes. So that goes with a positive recommendation to the board trustees.
November 12th is the date of the...
Yes. You may want to be there. I assume they may just do it in the, approve it in front without discussing it. But you may want to be there.
Consent agenda.
Come on, buddy.
It's part of the consent agenda. Move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for Zoning Board of Appeals for case number 2019-Z-37?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
It's called the next case.
Our next case is 2019 C-38, 1140 Greenwood Avenue. This is a request for a 1.71-foot side yard adjoining a street setback variation to permit the construction of a two-story addition.
Great. Hello, my name is Greg Adams. I'm the owner of 1140 Greenwood. I appreciate the committee here, or the board, hearing my request. I also want to thank Lisa and her team for helping guide through this process. So the structure that we're planning, or we're asking for permission to build replaces an existing structure that has a structural deficiency. I do have an engineering report that's not in your reports, if anyone would like to take a look at that. When we bought the house in 2012, through the inspection and then the subsequent engineering report, we found out that the room that is, that we're talking about taking off, the land around that had settled, and if you were, saw the property, you may have seen that there were a lot of cracks around the mortar. It's been re-mortared several times. We've had cracks inside and actually had about a six-foot section of ceiling that fell in last summer, which was fun to clean up as well. As I understand, because my house is non-conforming on the lot, that anything I want to do that involves taking it completely down would require the same variation, because today the house, as built in 1922, does not meet the setback from either Greenwood or 12th Street. So what we've planned to do here is to take that where the problem exists today, which is a one-story, I guess you called it an addition, but we think it's original to the house, to take that off and replace it with a two-story structure, so, which would allow us to build a larger master bath in our master bedroom, which is on that corner. We're actually pulling the setback from Greenwood back to be conforming, so that would be now conforming, and we're actually, I believe, pulling back even a little further from what the existing structure is from 12th Street, but it is still non-conforming, which is the reason for this request.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
So the, I just want to make sure, 1.10 is the new elevations, correct?
I'm sorry, I don't...
The new, I'm sorry, the new elevations are on 1.10?
Do you have the material?
Because it looks like you're adding a third floor as well.
What's going, so what we're doing as we're building it, we're going to extend the roof level.
Okay.
So that, so that it's consistent across the entire top of the house. So today, where it is, it's a flat roof, where that structure, we're going to go up and tie it into the existing roof so that it looks like it's, basically the roof extends the entire length of the house.
I had a similar question, because the existing roof is a hip roof, and at the other end, the north end, there is still a small hip.
Correct.
And you wouldn't have that here, so it does look like you're adding third floor space in addition to. I understand that with the fenestration, you know, it's symmetrical and consistent, but I was surprised to see the elevation since there was no drawing for any third floor space.
The reason why we're doing that, I think it's probably more aesthetic than anything else. If you take a look back at how the house was built, so what we kind of view as the side of our home is actually what fronts on Greenwood, and so if you take a step back, owners prior to myself did an addition to the home that goes kind of to the alley back. And so it's a four-square kind of colonial with what looks like a big addition on the back end of it. What I'm trying to do with this in addition aesthetically is to balance out the look of the house, so that by having more structure on that side, it doesn't look like a traditional four-square colonial with a ranch house built on one side of it. And so that is one of the reasons for the aesthetics of bringing the roof totally out.
The question is, is the, that third floor, there's a window there, is that usable space on the third floor?
It, so it currently is storage. I mean, it...
It will be storage? So you can access that space?
There is, there are stairs, so it's not, it's not a ladder. There are stairs that go up to that space, and the existing has a bathroom that is rarely used, and then there is, there is room space. Our intent was to continue to use that as storage.
My, I don't know what the, the six-foot-nine is the magic number from the floor to the rafters, right?
Yes.
And I don't know if that applies in this addition.
They're adding a little bit of floor area, but it's conforming.
Okay.
Oh, so there's not an FAR concern? Okay.
As I understand... As I understand, I think other than the setback, every other measurement that is required, we would meet.
Anything else for the applicant? I just, well, I'll save it for the discussion.
I am impressed with the size of the soaking tub.
I wish I could take credit for that, that's my wife's idea.
If there are no other questions for the applicant, please have a seat and I will see if anybody in the audience wants to speak on this subject.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And if not, I'll close the testimony and ask someone to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. Sorry, I was looking at the drawing.
Mr. Sermon?
Let's see. I move to recommend granting a request for 1.71 side yard adjoining street setback variation to permit the construction of a two-story addition at 1140 Greenwood Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted.
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Sermon?
Since there is an FAR issue, it's really a pretty minor request for 1.7 side, you know, feet setback. I do have to comment as an architect, well, I don't have to, but I will. Should I not? Your grimace. Aesthetically, I think it would look better if the third floor was a different type of roof even. Right now, it looks to me like an addition, you want it to look like it fits in. But I think the balance of it, it, the overhang and other stuff, it doesn't look quite right. Just a recommendation. Or a suggestion, or whatever the zoning board considers it, right?
Any other comments?
I agree with what you said. I was a little confused by your saying you were moving, the addition would be setback slightly further from either 12th Street or Greenwood, because looking at the site plan, you know, 1.4, it looks like it's the exact same dimensions you've just squared off the corners. But perhaps I'm not reading the drawing correctly. In any event, it's not a, it's not a major issue. So I can support it. Any other comment?
Yeah, I think it's a de minimis request. You know, once again, it's a home built in 1922 and, you know, those are the types of homes we're, you know, we're hoping to keep in the village. This is a minor request for some modernization, which makes sense to me and so I can support this.
I can also support, I was actually heartened that the setback from Greenwood Avenue was lengthened to make it conforming and the 1.7 feet on 12th Street.
So it's actually.
I agree also, I just, I was for a while thinking, if you had moved the addition 1.7 feet to the east, that would have not required you to have a variation, but it would have looked like hell because it was not symmetrical. So I can, I think it's a small request and I think it's an improvement to the whole house and I, again, I hope you will enjoy the new space. No other comments? Can we take a move?
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Peloton?
Yes.
Mr. Colang?
Yes.
Ms. Chalk Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
That goes with a positive recommendation. It may be approved by the consent agenda on the meeting, which I've just lost the date of.
November 6th?
November 12th.
November 12th. But if you want to have fun and watch the board operate, please, please attend.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2019-Z-38.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next case, please.
Our next case is 2019-Z-36, 1421 Forest Avenue. This is a request for a 164.23 square foot total floor area variation and an 84.61 square foot lot coverage variation to permit the construction of a one-story addition.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Dave Flick.
And I'm Carrie Flick.
1421 Forest Avenue. We'd like to thank Lisa for walking us through this procedure, we've never done this before. So, what we're trying to do is put a small addition on the back of our house as a bedroom for when our parents come to visit, they're both sets of grandparents are getting up in age and their, our guest bedroom is currently on the third floor or down the basement and they can't take the steps like they used to and that's only going to get worse. So, we wanted to put a bedroom on the first floor that would house either of them for when they come to visit and her parents come to visit often. And eventually, we expect, you know, one set to eventually live with us. She's an only child, it'll probably be her parents when they become, you know, unable to live on their own. So, that's why we're doing the addition. It's a one-story addition. The only variation is in the, well, I guess it's two technically, is in the total floor area variation and the lot coverage variation. We think it's relatively small. When we bought the house, you know, the, they kind of used the bonus space above the garage and in the attic. We didn't really have a choice for that. So that kind of used up what could have been used, I think, if I understand it correctly, what we would have been able to do for this addition. So I guess that's our hardship. I'm trying to think what else.
So the garage is larger than?
The garage, it's a three-car garage, yes.
So you feel it's some of the?
That's using up some of our square footage.
Okay.
And it was, you know, we bought it as a spec home, it was already built, so we didn't really have the choice on that.
And then with the, what, the other bonus was the attic bonus, you said?
Correct.
So how does that work?
I'm sorry?
How does that, that's, again, some of the square footage?
That's, correct, that's some of the square excess.
Do you still use the third floor, though?
We do, that's where.
We have four kids.
We have four kids, yeah.
Okay. Continue, sorry.
No, so I don't know what else, I mean, we've talked to many of our neighbors, nobody has a problem with it. It's a one-story, so it's not impeding anybody's view. Our neighbors all like our, all like my in-laws, so they're fine with that. So I don't know what else to, I guess, you know, it's going to fit in with the existing character of the house, so it's not going to be noticeable. We have our architect here, if you guys have any specific questions on that, but.
The drawings and the elevations don't show how, because this is going in the, the proposed addition goes in large part where the existing deck is. Are you going to rebuild the deck, add more to the deck? What's the plan for the deck area?
The deck area will just get smaller. So we also have a patio that we'll just make more use of.
And this is more a question out of curiosity, anything else? But you don't have a shower or bath on the floor, so.
No, so, oh, go ahead.
Well, that's phase two, I mean, if we get this approved, one of our plan is to turn the half bath that we have on the first floor into a full bath.
Do you have a sports court in the backyard?
We do.
Is that considered pervious, Lisa?
It is impervious, but it is in the buildable area, so it's not counting as impervious surface.
Okay, so that was looked at as part of this?
No, that's a previous permit, previous project.
They, they don't show the deck that will be retained or added to, is that going to be a problem?
No, it'll need to be on the building permit set, but if it's anything like what they have now, it will continue to be conforming.
It doesn't look like much of the deck will be remaining, will it? After the addition?
I think about half of it is going to be remaining, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
And the deck is considered impervious, 100% impervious, a deck?
It would be, but only the parts that land in the side yard. And so if it's in line with the house, it probably won't be in, within the setback and therefore won't count as impervious or against a limit of impervious.
And the sport corp will remain?
Yes.
I guess if you were to make a request, this is a small request, since I haven't, a lot of people go for the second floor like the last applicant, so.
Well, we'll go with this, any other questions or comments for the applicant?
As far as the phase two, doing the bathroom, you're not going to need to go outside of the four corners of the house.
No, no, we.
We have a closet that's, that we can go with.
Yeah.
By the way, I came by your house at 11:45, I rang the bell, I think I did.
Were you there for lunch?
I was going to say, was that daytime or nighttime?
You know what, our doorbell hasn't, like, it works on and off, like, it's so weird, yes. Sorry.
You were just looking at me and saying, who's that strange guy?
I'm surprised the dog didn't act as a doorbell.
No, no, no.
Anyway, not important. Any other comments? If not, thank you, I will close the testimony and please have a seat.
Thank you very much.
And I will ask for a motion.
Move to recommend granting a request for a 164.23 square foot, 1.77% total floor area variation and 84.61 square foot, 0.91% lot coverage variation to permit the construction of a one-story addition at 1421 Forest Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted.
Second.
Second, okay.
Yeah, so I think, you know, this is, you know, another minor request. It's, you know, the house wasn't built that long ago, it was built in 2003. So, you know, we don't look at it the same as maybe the previous one that was built in 1922, that, you know, doesn't have a lot of the modern amenities here, you do. But you're trying to accomplish something as it relates to parents. You know, the hardship per se, I have a little bit of difficulty seeing that here. But because of the de minimis, you know, under 2% total floor area coverage variation and under 1% lot coverage variation, I think it's minor enough that I can support it, so.
I can also support this. Small enough and I think it is a compelling case to allow parents to age with family and preferable to institutionalizing if you don't have to do that. So, I can support this.
Don't tell my parents.
They said her parents were nice.
Better hope than not watching.
Did you want to say?
I, yeah, I have some reservations because it's a fairly new house and because, you know, there is no obvious hardship. I mean, I understand that you want, this is something that you want to do and you're kept from doing it. But I think that, as you pointed out, it's a fairly small ask in terms of the FAR, so I can support it.
I agree, I think if you would have come in with a larger request or two stories, you know, to add another space upstairs, it would have been more difficult. But since the request is so small, I can support it.
I agree also, technically, if I look at the standards of review, four of the seven standards are not met here technically. But there are mitigating circumstances, the three-car garage where you don't get full benefit and the attic as well. So in that sense, you're penalized somewhat and the fact that it is a relatively small request, all that put together, I can support it. Please call the board.
Mr. Colang?
Yes.
Ms. Chalk Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Peloton?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Positive recommendation and it will go to the board as such and you can appear on November 12th. It probably will go with the consent agenda, but just to be sure, please, you may want to appear. Thank you.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendations for the zoning board of appeals, case number 2019-Z-36.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the meeting minutes for the zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, September 18th, 2019.
So moved. For second?
Second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the meeting minutes for zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, October 2nd, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just wanted to make one comment, that architecturally, the architect who walked out did a nice job. The architect did a nice job with the addition. Since I critique that other one.
Thank you.
Seeing no one in the audience.
Come for a variance, get another motion. Yeah, exactly.
To close the meeting.